A motion for that?
Motion to approve the agenda.
In a second.
Second, sorry.
Perfect. All in favor, I.
I.
And the agenda is approved and with that we will open for a public comment period for items not on the agenda. If anyone would like to take the opportunity. If not, we.
I would like to bring up an item that I put on the agenda that we talked about at last meeting. We had talked about the property on Waterman Road. And the potential for possibly rezoning that. That site is listed on our sites inventory that was submitted to HCD as available for affordable housing projects. In light of the fact that HCD has not yet certified our housing element. And we have not received a letter, but the county did receive a letter and the cities of Sutter Creek and Jackson have. On some changes that need to be made subsequent to all of our approvals of the documents. That now is probably not a good time to mess with that list. Because if we rezone that, we have to do a general plan amendment at the same time. So after discussing this issue with the city manager, we decided that this is just not the right time to bring it up.
Bless you. Thank you.
That was, I just wanted to.
No, that's a good, I didn't even follow up on that issue and that's a good. So Jackson and Sutter Creek and the county have all received letters acknowledging back, but Ione is not. I just want to.
Well, they received letters saying that there's some additional changes that have to be made. And so when the housing group met last month. It was the day before that the planning or the board supervisors was going to be approving the revised and updated contract with the consultant that prepared the housing element. So that they are back working on it again, so assumably. So and I'm, I've heard HCD's just sent me a couple of questions the day, day before yesterday, I think. And I'm getting back to them, so I'm guessing that we'll probably get the same letter.
Just moving forward with a few little tweet, okay, okay.
So I'll keep, I'll keep the planning commission up to date on what's happening with that.
I just wanted, that was kind of a shot in the dark, but I appreciate you looking into it.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to take a look at it and bring it up under public comment. Wasn't something I wanted to necessarily put on the agenda and call attention at this time.
No, but items not on the agenda, that's perfect. So no, and that is a good update. So no, agreed. I mean, we should just let things play out and then we can always revisit, you know, as a, as the case may be. So, okay, great. Okay, and then it does not appear we have any other comments and we do not actually have presentations or a consent agenda, but we have the A, ACRT, the Amador County Regional Transportation Plan update. And I was reading it as just an opportunity to comment as well. But Susan, if you would like to.
Sure, I think I brought this up at the last meeting that the Amador County Transportation Commission had completed an update of the, of their, the Amador County Regional Transportation Plan. Just for a little bit of background, the Amador County Transportation Commission acts as the regional transportation planning agency for the county and as, as a result is required by state law to prepare a regional transportation plan. And that's to identify a 20-year vision for transportation priorities and investments. The RTP establishes regional goals, identifies present and future needs, deficiencies and constraints, analyzes potential solutions, estimates available funding and proposes investments. It's to be updated and submitted to the California Transportation Commission and Caltrans every five years to better align with our housing cycle. They do it every four years so that it falls on that same year that we're, or an off year from doing the housing element. So on May 3rd, 2024, the ACTC issued a notice of intent to develop, or excuse me, a notice of intent to adopt a mitigated negative declaration. On the regional transportation plan, I included both the regional transportation plan and your, and that MND in your packet for review. This RTP is, I will, the bulk of it's pretty much the same and it has all the same identifications of issues and constraints that we've seen in past RTPs. The difference is that priority funding table that's in there. In the past, the, the Amador County Transportation Commission really focused on capacity improvements. So bigger projects like this Ione's Wyris project. And not so much on rehab and repair of existing roads. And the political climate has changed in light of the fact that we don't have money for infrastructure improvements and for maintenance and maintenance keeps getting deferred. So the Transportation Commission shifted its focus to those rehab and rehabilitation projects. And those projects that are prioritized for that 20-year list are those that are shovel-ready. They've, they're designed, they're ready to go, they've been through environmental and they are improvements to existing facilities. That is not to say that in the future, another, another project can't be added if an entity or jurisdiction is able to get additional funding, say like a shop project from Caltrans. And we can apply and, you know, and get on that list. Because they do redo an update, not an update, but a review of this on an annual basis. And the Regional Traffic Mitigation Fee Committee meets on a, on an annual basis as well to look at, you know, the funding on, on the funding on the list and what projects are there. So there's some opportunities in the future. I don't think there's much we can do now, but having talked to our city engineer and the city manager, the idea of moving forward is to break down the Wyris program into chunks. It's already kind of been done that way anyway, but actually get a solidified plan in place from the city council that we can start. You know, you can create a capital improvement plan that we can hopefully get onto future lists in this RTP. So that's the biggest change with the RTP. So the objective tonight is to provide any comments on the RTP or its associated mitigated negative declaration that I will forward those comments on to the city council. It's going to their next meeting. And, and then if there's anything substantive, we will take, take it to the Amador County Transportation Commission. Any questions of staff?
Is my memory serving me correctly that what I read about that in this enormous packet of paper?
Sorry, it's a lot.
Is, yeah, it was, is that it looked, it was a positive statement by the author of the document here. Authors that looks like there was going to be money available for local projects. That wasn't going to be a problem. It was going to be money available for large products, projects like our bypass.
Right.
Is, that's what I understood I read.
So, so there's, there's several different funding sources identified in the RTP. And those, most of those we get on a, on a regular basis. Getting the funding for the bigger projects is much harder to do, it's much more competitive and you, it's, you, you really have to be prepared and have everything in order for that. So a good example that I'm really familiar with is the Sutter Street Extension Project in Jackson. That isn't on the list either. It's through design and it's through environmental, so it's technically shovel-ready. But it is a regional project and it is a new project to deal with capacity issues that are being caused on the surrounding roadways, particularly if consolidation goes through. So that project is not on that list, on the top, the 20-year list. It's down further in tier two, but it could be brought up if additional funding is found or if mitigation as a result of consolidation happens, that could be moved up. So there is opportunities and I keep thinking, you know, the city is, the city of Ione is working on a five-year capital improvement program that includes roads, that also includes roads on the state highway system that we're going to need to work with the CTC and Caltrans on. And those may come on this list with a local funding component of it as well. So potential in the future. This was kind of depressing because we don't have any projects on here. But I think, I think it's just a little bit of a testament to not having kind of a real vision for transportation for the future. We have a circulation element, but it's not broken down into projects with, with numbers and and a process to proceed and we, that's what we need to work on next and staff is working on it.
I just had a comment or two reading through this thing. It's, it appears to me to be kind of slanted towards anything at a higher elevation than us. And you have, what, environmental setting and project location, I'm not sure. Doesn't have a, page one or three, page three. But between 2020 and 23, the population had a 1.6% decline. And on that basis, and they talk about it in a couple of places, they're using those years that nothing's grown. You can say it's actually gotten less. Whereas if you, if you live here, you know it. If you look in the current issue of the local paper, it's got the growth of cities in the state. Ione has grown and it's that same 20 to 23-year period, 5.6%. Due to the decline in population and traffic volumes on the Amador County Regional Roadways. Transportation improvements have been focused primarily on preservation and rehabilitation of the county's local roadway. One thing about that is it, that seems to me, it just erases any current thought whatsoever of a bypass around Ione.
It, it, you know, I've sat in on the technical advisory committee for the Amador County Transportation Commission for decades and I don't, I don't believe that's the case. I just think that as it was presented as a very big, large bypass project to, to deal with some issues that arguably someone could say is Caltrans problems because you know, this, the problems on the state highway system in the city of Ione is, I mean, your biggest problems are on Maine and Preston and that, those are state highways. So you know, that the bent is to go away from, from these Caltrans projects that are costly, time-consuming. And you know, like this, the Sutter Creek bypass took generations to do, not just decades. So that they don't, it's, the idea is to, is to scale it down and work on projects that Caltrans wouldn't otherwise be on the hook for.
There's another appendix G, page 30, and it's kind of reflective of the same thing. Due to the recession and slow, again, it's, I'm not sure what years they're using right here, but traffic volumes have either decreased slightly or remain generally the same for almost all locations. As such, older counts within this period could still be considered generally reflective of existing traffic conditions. Preston Avenue wasn't always like this. And this is completely wrong when it comes to Ione.
Okay, and I think that's a very valid, very valid comment to forward on to the city council and potentially the ACTC that, that, that statement doesn't hold up in the city of Ione, particularly when you're looking at impacts to the intersection of like Shakely and Preston is, and Preston and Maine are, they're, they're bad. But you know.
Terrible.
They're, they're very congested and potentially safety issues. So that is a comment that I can craft and forward up to the city council to go to the ACTC that they should probably reword some of that.
Put in a little caveat to that.
Throw us a bone here, folks.
On page 20, I saw Shakely Lane mentioned in the Buena Vista corridor, but I, I think this is where they had done some existing counts maybe, and they had some specific volume they were recognizing. But I think that if, I would just want to make sure that there's adequate representation if we're going to be bringing up specific intersections that the circumstances that have been created with the, the school cycle is just something that I, I think doesn't really adequately come across. You know, the, the impacts and, and really that it is a safety. It, it's just really incredible that there hasn't been, you know, a, a real catastrophe. And you know, we don't, we don't want to just idly sit by and wait for that before, you know, something else is done. But I just think these areas and especially, I know we touched just briefly, you made a comment about the consolidation. I think with the resignation of the current superintendent, I, I think we just, who knows what's going to happen with a consolidate. We have existing, you know, issues that are compounded regularly. Like we still have the, what is it, the lunch pickup that's still occurring? So it's, it's like a year-round, you know, issue. So I think even though it is tied to the school sites, it, it creates a, a citywide effect. So.
And I, and I think now is the time to also put in some standards and required studies. When new development comes in because I have, I have heard, you know, well, you know, Ione has some of these intersection problems, but they didn't require the development to come, that came in to, to address the issue. And unfortunately now, SEQA has changed from level of service review to VMT, which is what the school district is hanging their hat on.
Right.
And so that makes it a little bit more difficult, but there's way, there are ways around that. And, and particularly when safety comes up as an issue. So I think the city needs to continue to work towards getting some of these standards and, you know, requirements in place prior to.
I think that's the key. And I think that's kind of what we touched on a little bit is that, you know, we're all aware, but are we being proactive enough and laying the foundation that enables that, you know, shovel-ready concept to be applied to, you know, this intersection, you know, in 2025? Because I, I feel like it's, you know, we all know about these issues, but I, I don't know what is actually being formally accomplished. And I'm, you know, I think we're at the point where we're supportive if there's something we can better facilitate, even if it is something that, you know, just kind of this, this exercise really bringing it to, you know, city council to encapsulate. But I, I would think if we have an opportunity to have specific intersections and get, you know, more than just this little blurb, which I was appreciative to see it, you know, on page 23. But I do, I do think we could go beyond what is, what is stated here.
Okay, well, I can certainly add a comment to take forward to the city council regarding population and how it's impacted Ione differently than the rest of the county.
I have a question on page 40, appendix K, the list of the project prioritization list. Ione's only got one thing on these two pages. And that, it says, it's on the second page, about two-thirds of the way down. South Sacramento Street from Market to Jackson. That's, you know, just around the corner there and it's just one block. Looking at that, I have no idea why that's singled out and why that would be, I mean, it's like everything else around there. It's no different than anything, better than a lot of places.
Is that on the tier two list?
It's appendix K, project prioritization, page 40.
I don't have my appendix, but that's the same table that's in the body of the document as well.
I just wonder, is, I mean.
What project number is that?
Is this the tier two regional project unfunded? You said South Sacramento from Market to Jackson, it was that one?
Tier two, number 55.
Yeah, number 55.
Okay. I will.
I'm just wondering, I mean.
Right.
We have this.
I'm not familiar with what that one is, but I will look, I will look into it and I can send you all an email.
I'm just curious, because I mean, our main problem is coming, you're Preston Avenue and 124, 104 Shakely. And then it carries on through town, but that one intersection in particular, that's not mentioned on here at all. There's no priority to it. And I'm just wondering, is that because it's state highway and the county? I mean, is that what kicked it off of this prioritization list?
Yeah, so if you go to tier three, which is on, if you go to the main document, page 75, that's where you're going to find most of the Ione stuff. And it's, and it's because it's, it's on the state highway project. It's considered a, a regional state highway project. So, and that's not to say, as I said, that we can't move these up. But I think we need to, we need to solidify what we want. Break it into, phase it into pieces that are manageable. And then figure out the, the different funding sources and then make our pitch to the ACTC as to why on the next cycle, it needs to be a tier one or a tier two project instead of tier three.
Okay, yeah. Towards the end of this, I was skimming.
Okay, I know it's long.
And it's tables blur.
And even with my Peters, I still had a magnifying glass, so.
I brought two pairs this time.
No, yeah, this is more of what I had in mind, a little more comprehensive. Yeah, everything pretty much winds up on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's two or three. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, our Shakely Lane, Preston Avenue, 104, 124 intersection improvements doesn't have a cost estimate.
It's there.
See, and these are some of the things that we can, we can request Caltrans. You know, do, you know, we can engage with Caltrans to see what they are willing to do and then we can, we get cost estimates. And potentially, you know, demonstrate some additional need, we'll get further.
Right. Now, I would like to see if we could prioritize, you know, we've got the sidewalks on Shakely, bike signage on West Marlet, bicycle and pedestrian improvements. We, we have very little pedestrian or bicycle, anything in, in Ione. And so, I mean, if we could somehow get, I don't know, I'm almost at the point where like, anything should be prioritized, you know, if there was.
So the bike and pedestrian projects are not to, really, I mean, they're listed here just because they're a holdover, but really they're listed in the bike and ped plan and there are some funds in that. And there are some outside funding sources that are available for those types of projects. Again, we have to develop them though, get them, get them ready.
Needs kind of a matrix of what falls in what category to try to get the next best step of action. Okay.
So, and I, and I feel like you've, over the past year, year and a half, you've made some progress towards a capital improvement plan that includes, you know, sidewalks, bike, parks, right, you know, your sewer collection system, a variety of things. But we need to finish that process and, but we're working on it.
Not sure this matters because it sounded like in the plan that all the tier one projects are, are categorically exempt from SEQA? Is it, is it a statement that they made in there or that they've already been through?
They're not necessarily categorically exempt. They may have gone through a, some sort of environmental review other than an exemption and negative declaration or a mitigated negative declaration. But they, they're closer to being able to go to construction.
There's a lot of the mitigation outlined in this mitigated neg deck was very wishy-washy, I thought, I mean.
Well, you have to remember that that's an environmental document on a plan. So it's, it's not on an actual project, it's on a plan. So when these projects come up, then they have to undergo project level review. And, you know, a lot, some of them, if they're already in an, in a disturbed area, on a roadway, et cetera, they're not going to have any impacts, so they can be categorically exempted. If they are gonna, you know, changing some, modifying some curves or something to that extent, you can usually do that under a mitigated negative declaration where you, you've got someone out there looking for cultural or biological impacts and leave it at that. Pretty easy.
Short, tiny one. Do you think it would be more appropriate for these documents to also include electric bicycles?
Oh boy, so those are also covered under the bike and ped plan. And, you know, that's kind of a new planning topic right now because.
It is so confusing that some national forests allow them and some don't.
Well, and you know, they are a motorized vehicle and so there's some questions about using them on roadways versus on the bike lanes and there's a lot of debate right now in the planning world about them. So, but we'll let the transportation engineers deal with that in the next bike and ped plan.
I would say they were going to, ACTC was going to update the bike ped plan in 24, 25.
Yeah, so that's coming up. And I'm, and like I said, that's kind of a hot, hot button topic right now, so. So this isn't agendized as a public hearing, but you might want to open it to public.
Oh yeah, I should, yeah. So at this time, we can go ahead and open up for public comment on the the plan we've been discussing if anyone.
Gary Thomas, 125 Maple Street. I might be a little bit off topic, but I don't believe so. The bypass is part of all this, of course, so that I'm on topic. In my opinion, there's two big issues that face the city of Ione. And that's monies and revenues and so forth like that and the transportation. That's got to be a level of service F and I'm not going to tell you what I think F stands for. It would probably be rude. But on the money side of that, the original bypass was to terminate out here at the Ione Industrial Park, which would be good for Ione and revenues coming in and so forth. So I'd like to always have that remembered as just instead of having a bypass and whatever. But we have the opportunity to have a good city industrial park out there. And there's a lot of minerals and everything else that probably could come into play. There's some plants around here that are thinking about expanding. There's some plants around here that are thinking about expanding three or four more plants and maybe five total. I don't know. So there's always that opportunity. Yeah, the level service is F. There's a lot of side roads and stuff around here, too, and there probably is some stuff. When I was on the city council. We approved cutting the corner off the park. And then we wanted to take the left turn lane into all the way up, I said, to the market and everybody overruled me and said, no, let's take it up to the Shakeley, which was even better. And that would address some of Mr. Gibhart's comments about that side of the town. Boy, at certain times of the day, you feel like you're trapped. But the one thing I'd like to point out, I've done this at the water agency and so forth. Who's using all these roads and stuff like that? Well, first. To get somewhere, we're gonna all need to work together to get consensus and that goes with you guys to the city. To the county and the legislatures and everything else. And that's going to take a lot of dollars, no matter what we do. But I'd like to. Remind everybody here, not that you probably don't know, but. The fire police, ambulance service, all of our emergency services and everything get bottlenecked and that's really not fair. So now let's find out who's using that road. All the big trucks and everything like that, and they're bypassing them through here. Mule Creek uses it and they do a two for. On some of their stops, that means you'll see them stop and then you'll see a gopher two. So they have two vehicles because they always have to have them together. Sometimes there's three together, sometimes there's two, sometimes there's just one and sometimes and it's an ambulance and a car. So they use and utilize our roads immensely. So let's not stop at Mule Creek. Let's just say that Mule Creek. Has a responsibility as they've added on out there, then they added a second prison. So they don't, that doesn't stop there, the responsibility at the gates. They enjoy our community and so forth, so I'd like you guys to keep that in mind as we go forward. That we have their people in our community that is another burden on upon our road services and everything that we have to offer. So as we go through and develop a plan with the city and everything, I'd like to make sure that we understand the dynamics. Of Mule Creek. Both inside the gates and outside the gates and C D F as well, so. It, you know, but the state is in here with us and and when we're asking for money to go get this bypass done. It's got to be good, it's got to work, it's got to be functional. I don't know that I'm set on a certain plan, but I'm certainly set on one that works. And if it could help bring revenues into the city at the same time, I'm I'm good with that. Mark, can I ask you a question? Were you, when you were first asking those numbers, was that year two thousand six that you said about the? The, was that the two thousand six year? I think when you first started your comments to Susan or asking.
I think it's it's two thousand. All these studies that they're basing on it, twenty to twenty three.
I thought I heard a two thousand six number, but I was gonna remind.
Another one where I saw that, but.
I thought I was going to remind you guys that about two thousand six, the population started. Going crazy around here with the two thousand seven, two thousand eight, people were already distressed and losing properties. I think we had ten percent of the properties at Comanche. That were distressed and and nobody living in and everything else, so that might be that.
Yeah, this says for intersections and roadway segments, available traffic counts from two thousand six. Two thousand thirteen were considered generally valid for use.
Thank you.
And just one, one comment. Susan, I know you said Sutter Creek had been at this for generations. I know we've been talking about the bypass for at least sixty years that I can remember.
Yeah.
That's several generations.
Yeah. Yeah, but they they actually had an approved project for. A long time, a long, long, long time, so.
We're talking about bypasses, they had. The state, they don't have them over because I went to look for them. The original ones went clean around. Preston and come in where Mule Creek was, the other one went clean around. By eighty eight, clean to Carbondale. That was the two bypasses. That was the original ones that put out by Caltrans. The thing I'd like to bring up is the prison. I was on the committee to fight the second prison. And I got the numbers and I got them at home. It was four thousand cars before the first prison got there. And after the prison got built, there was eight thousand cars at your intersection. A day. And now they put the other prison in and we have never seen the count of the cars. All you got to do is go Caltrans and you can find the dates when they. Before that prison, second prison went in this other one and you'll find out how much it it increased. And it's big time. And nobody says anything about it. And the other thing is this city. When they first put the prison, they had that problem over to the school. They went to the prison and wanted to change their shift change, so they weren't changing the same time the schools in. They never did that. And I don't know why they're supposed to be friendly to us. It wouldn't be nothing for them to change an hour east direction, either way. And they won't do that, and I wish they'd bring that up again to council because you guys, all you can do is advise them. But I think that's a big point. And it would do away with ninety percent of the problem we got. Thank you. And it'd do away with some of your problem on your street, too. Thank you.
I was on the, I I was on the, I was on the committee to fight the first prison.
I was not, I wasn't on the committee, he didn't have one then.
We didn't really have one, but Scully and me and the Silvers, we'd go down to Sacramento and fight with Senator Presley and. It was like. And I was painting pictures at the time for eleven. I didn't know anything about it and it was like, to me, it was like playing chess. Where you don't know how to move and they do. And it was so damn frustrating.
Well, culture.
That's when I ended up going to law school because I was so just freaking frustrated.
Well, I thought it was pretty good. Cal, he was head of the prison system, he was on it with us.
Yeah.
That might tell you something.
Okay, so. I've got some comments here, particularly about the growth and and took some notes on. Maybe some other things that the council can do to. Improve situation, but in terms of the R T P, I definitely some comments on the growth and how it's. Doesn't really address the growth in in I own, at least identify it and show it as as it should be. Here instead of a decrease that we've experienced an increase.
Right, I'm not sure. It seems like that's happened the last couple of times when there's been data pulled from the city. It's like it's. Kind of skewed data, so I mean, it seems, I I don't know, it it's either. Intentionally kind of using this timeframe, like we talked about, you know, where there was a true downturn, but it. Yeah, we just, we want to make sure that the right data is.
I will flag. Couple of the comments in, you know, or a couple of those population statistics in the document for the council. And then we'll take it on.
What Larry brought up is true, too, and may be very useful if you can. Before they built that second prison, they did a thorough traffic study of all the intersections and all that and.
You guys didn't get anything from it.
No, that one particular intersection, you know, Preston Avenue Shakeley one twenty four. Said this before here. They have a, you know, a rating schedule for intersections where they do something or not. And I think five is when they, you know, do something. It was a four then, right on the edge of five. And I know it's gone up since then. Yes, I mean, you can count how many more houses there since then. You can estimate. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, I have direction. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Susan, for. Getting this in front of us. Any other? Comments or anything else to be added? Okay. And so this comment period will stay open through July nineteenth. Okay.
Yeah, it was, it was kind of funny because I. I called John Gundy and I'm like, I I emailed him.
Yeah.
Him inflation, I'm like, hey. This doesn't give me time to take it to, and he's like, oh, I don't want to be like the school district. Next thing I knew, I got the the revised notice. I'm like, thank you.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, no one is anticipating, it's not a big, you know.
Right, right.
Deficiencies or anything, but it's just. You know, give us time to go through the process, so.
Okay. Sure. I think it's the pedestrian, right? Pedestrian and bike, yeah, so was that listed where the, there were, yeah, yeah. No, it's, they had some good portions about the about creating, what was it? The. Why was it that like the shoulders, they want to widen and just create a better. There's some of the same verbiage on other. Sections, but yeah, I mean, I didn't necessarily feel like anything was overtly missing. Based on, I guess, the tier three.
It's just that it's in tier three.
It's just that it's in tier three, exactly, and that is where the. The Howard Park turn pockets, intersection improvements, it is represented. In fact, there's a few sections with. Howard Park complete sidewalks, pedestrian crossings. I mean, it is, it is definitely, you know, a wish list is how it's presented, but. We do, we need to get these things.
And I think as that bike and ped plan comes up and there's opportunities for participation that we need to participate.
Right, yes, exactly. That that's the other thing with it is I did see some mention of that, that, you know. There was a certain value listed of of kind of. Identified pedestrian bike and ped projects and that as additional resources became available, it would, you know, they're going to try to find that, so. I do feel that for I own, that is really important that we try to also find. Opportunities to address the bike and pet because we can't simply. Lump it into a transportation issue. It truly is. Right, you know, parks, wrecks, it's it's beyond that, so, no, and I I do feel, I do like that and I hear you saying that, that, you know, the capital improvement plan is being worked on and. That's all positive, you know, it's all trying to be positive, so.
I think Debbie Mackey's working on the safe route to school grant.
Okay.
We applied in the past.
That's a good program, yeah.
No, we had a huge turnout of like kids for the walk, walking ones. It was just a huge number and so it's. I know that there would even be more participation if if parents and households felt comfortable with with better.
More safe.
More safety sidewalks, bet better, better roadways, so. Okay. Um, no, I don't, I don't, I don't think I have anything more. You said you have some good notes, so do we want to move on to our commission member reports? Do we have any reports that we? Want to share? I feel like we were kind of all over the board today with topics that we kind of had some reporting, albeit informally. And then do we have, so we do have the July eighth, is there any preview of our? Agenda that you may know for?
If if I can get done with with, I do have not forgotten about the sign. And we were going to bring back some changes and the. Brochure. My focus has been on housing right now. If I if I can bring that back, I will.
Okay, no, I appreciate, I have been thinking about that. I know with the new city manager, you know, I think we wanted to as well see. How these projects fit in with some of the priorities this year and and things like that, so. But, okay, great, we will look forward to that for July. All right. Thank you. If nothing else, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thanks, everyone.